And that brings us to our next order of business, which is proclamations. We have one to be read in the record for Reverend Burgess.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1564. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh to hereby commend the Pittsburgh chapter for its dedication and contribution and leadership development to the youth of the City of Pittsburgh. And be a further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby declared Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, to be Jack and Jill Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Give a motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Reverend Burgess, have anything? See you on here. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation, does opposed? Proclamations approved. And Councilman O'Connor?
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1565. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh is hereby recognized and commend Stacy Smith for 50 years of award-winning broadcasting, for career of extraordinary achievement, friendships, and compassion, and for being a Pittsburgh icon. And be a further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh to hereby declare Monday, May 31st, 2021, to be Stacy Smith Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
I have a motion to approve in a second.
Motion approved.
Second.
Councilman O'Connor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman O'Connor?
No, just thank you. We presented to them last week on behalf of council. All good. Thank you, guys.
I saw it on TV. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilman Wilson?
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1566. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares the first Fridays of June, July, and August 2021 First Free Talk Day here in our most livable city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamations approved. Councilman Wilson?
I will do it on sight. They're having, um, all the businesses are gonna close down the street and they're gonna have, um, like a festival every first Friday. So try to make it over to East Ohio Street this Friday.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. And that brings us on to our next order of business, which is public comment. And we have one registered speaker. Madam Clark? Let me, let me, let me just read. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. Madam Clark, I'm sorry.
The first speaker is Ikona Hau Makina.
Thank you.
Greetings. A peace light in my title is the Kahanahau Makina. I am the Grand Inka of the Arikwak Confederacy of Indigenous American People. And I want to say to City Council, when, please tell me when that you will place a value on human life. While I find it very admirable that you sprung into action to speak out against hate and the Little League Boys Team Hub was vandalized and expressive hate. I stand with you in solidarity against hate. But when will you stand with me in solidarity against police brutality? When will you stand for police accountability? As I have expressed to you, two lives were lost on May 25th of 2006. We're not talking about spray paint that can be restored as you sprung into action to ensure that it was restored. How about making an attempt to restore the quality of life of seven children who were left behind due to police not following the instructions, not following the policies, codes, and statutes, not following your home rule trodden, acting under the color of law? Violated all of those policies. And as a result of that, two people are no longer with us. When will you place value on human life? You need to action to right the wrongs, to redress, to make restitution to a lineage of people who've been hurt by those police in accountability, in accountability actions? Those are matters of concern for council. People are broken as a result of that. And I would like City Council to spring into action and take action to right those wrongs. And a laundry list of wrongs that have been taking place for hundreds of years towards the Indigenous people of the Americas. Pay attention to us, for you have a trust responsibility to us. And there's a precedent that has been set. There's a whole book and declaration, the United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People. The international world is watching you. The local government, the federal, and the state has this trust obligation to ensure our safety in our own homeland. We will not be made to be exiled in our own land. These are matters that shall be discussed with us, the Indigenous people of America.
Thank you. Have a good day. There being no further registered speakers, our next order of business is a presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. I couldn't unmute myself fast enough, sorry.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1543. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner to install diesel exhaust apparatus in multiple emergency medical services stations and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $8,993.20.
Thank you. And we have Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman? Thank you. Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1544. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the 2020-2024 amended and restated Corporation and Support Agreement with the Allegheny Regional Asset District, the Carnegie Library, and the Allegheny County, and to enter into amendments thereto and ratifying prior actions. Bill Number 1545. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the CCAC Chalfont Hall renovations, 915 Ridge Avenue. Bill Number 1546. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 238, 240, and 242 East Jefferson Street in the 25th Ward. Bill Number 1547. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for parcel 0L42 at Duquesne University College of Osteopathic Medicine.
Thank you. And we, Councilwoman Gross, you have a waiver for Bill 1544?
I'm just clicking around here. And I see it now. Thank you. Motion to wake will be Bill 1544, was it?
Yes.
1544 to appear on tomorrow, tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Does oppose? The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. And Councilman Laval, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman Laval presents Bill Number 1548. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection's Alternative Fuels Incident Grant Program to purchase eight electric Chevy boats and an all-electric bucket truck to be added to the city's fleet not to exceed $160,000. Bill Number 1549. Resolution, further amending resolution number 675 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2009 Capital Budget and the 2009 CDVG Program and Approving the 2009 through 2013 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code." Bill Number 1550. Resolution, further amending resolution number 855 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012 CDVG Program and Approving the 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code." Bill Number 1551. Resolution, further amending resolution number 772 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2013 Capital Budget and the 2013 CDVG Program and Approving the 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code." Bill 551, 1552, I'm sorry. Resolution, further amending resolution number 772 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 CDVG Program and Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code." Bill Number 1553. Resolution, further amending resolution number 779 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 CDVG Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by Removing Unencumbered Funds from Projects Pending Closure Pursuant to Chapter 218 of the City Code." Bill Number 1554. Resolution, further amending resolution number 647 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CDVG Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Reappropriating Funds Closed Due to the Requirements of Chapter 218 of the City Code." Bill Number 1555. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with GovList Doing Business as Procure Now to purchase a subscription service for solicitation, contract, and vendor management services, as well as training for OMB staff at a cost not to exceed $235,000. Bill Number 1562. Resolution providing for the continued designation of a downtown Pittsburgh Business District for the area shown on Exhibit 8 at the behest of the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, a coalition of property owners, business leaders, retailers, civic organizations, and residents.
Thank you, Madam Clark. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1556. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Public Safety to enter into a data sharing agreement with the Rad Corporation, which shall be at no cost to the city. Bill Number 1557. Resolution authorizing the city's mayor and director of Public Safety to enter relevant agreement with specialized professional services for the hazardous material emergency response equipment and related training services in regards to operation of the city's hazardous material flare response system in an amount not to exceed $54,257. Bill Number 1558. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a commodities agreement for a three-year term with Teleflex LLC for the purchase of intrasaurious needles and related supplies.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1559. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into a master service agreement with Crown Castle to provide internet connectivity to city facilities as needed at a monthly utility fee.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1560. Resolution, further amending resolution number 863 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CDVG Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program so as to reduce Birmingham Foundation and Save a Life Today Pittsburgh by $8,000 and increase Birmingham Foundation and Brashear Association by $8,000 and authorize a subsequent agreement."
Thank you. And then for myself, I have two communications for acting pay. Madam Clark?
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1561. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of the Office of Management and Budget Department for Jennifer Ozinger for, per the acting pay policy revised in June of 2018. Bill Number 1563. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Chris Hornstein as the acting pay policy revised in June of 2018.
Thank you. And could I have a motion to read, receive, and file for both?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Laval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? Okay. They're approved. And now we'll move on to our unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished businesses before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Laval, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Laval presents Bill Number 1542. Reported the Committee on Finance and Law for May 26, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1520. Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Camel Customs in the amount of $11,500 for restoration of a mural at Quarry Field. Bill Number 1531. Resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Finance acting as the chief administrative officers of the employees' municipal pension fund to perform an actuarial analysis in accordance with Act 20553 and Ortnice Pension Act of 1975, Section 8, Pension Allowance, Paragraph 4I, to determine the cost of eliminating the social security offset for all active non-union employee members of the municipal pension fund hired after June 30th of 2004.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor? If the name is called, those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Councilman O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1536. Reported the Committee on Public Safety Services for May 26, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1505. Resolution authorizing the mayor and directing the Department of Public Safety to enter into relevant agreements or execute required purchase orders of a Hyundai EDR kit with GIT America at a cost not to exceed $7,715. Bill Number 1506. Resolution, amending resolution number 367, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an amended agreement with the Pittsburgh Public Safety Supply, Inc. for the provision of uniforms, duty equipment, and related tailoring and embroidering services for the Department of Public Safety by extending the term for one additional year. Bill Number 1507. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Office of the State Fire Commissioner to purchase a custom-built fire hydrant cutaway for the Fire Training Academy and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $14,999.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of vote? If the name is called, those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman.
Yep.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1537. Reported the Committee on Public Works for May 26, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1488. Resolution granting unto BBC Pittsburgh LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense two projecting signs at 1022 Chestnut Street, 23rd Ward, 2nd Council District. Bill Number 1490. Resolution granting unto Lamar Advertising Company their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install three exterior lights unto an existing building at 503 Court Place, 1st Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 1491. Resolution granting unto Trace Domas 14 LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a set of entry stairs to an existing building at 57 South 16th Street in the 17th Ward, 3rd Council District. Bill Number 1492. Resolution granting unto the Buncher Company their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a trench drain at the intersection of Corliss Street and Sharpieers Avenue in the 20th Ward, 2nd Council District. Bill Number 1494. Resolution authorizing the proper officers of the city pursuant to Section 4 of Resolution 680 of 1951 to cause the removal of a certain side track as further described therein and further providing such officers with authorization to effectuate and enforce all purposes provided in the resolution. Bill Number 1495. Resolution granting unto Kelly Bender their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new awning roof and railings on the existing porch with steps that encroach into the right-of-way at 34 Kinney Way in the 6th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1496. Resolution authorizing the transfer by the city to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation certain temporary construction easement rights on certain property of the 4th Ward of the city in cooperation with a pin dock construction project. Bill Number 1497. Resolution, further amending resolution number 863 of 2018 effective, entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CDVG Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Windsor Avenue by $100,000 and increasing step repair and replacement by $100,000."
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of vote? If the name is called, those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1538. Reported the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for May 26, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1509. Resolution, further amending resolution number 772 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 CDVG Program and Approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program so as to reduce prayer and deliverance community opportunities by $2,500 and increase Jewish family and community services food pantry by $2,500 and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements." Bill Number 1510. Resolution, further amending resolution number 797 entitled "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 CDVG Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program so as to reduce Bhutanese Community Association by $8,000 and increase Brookline Christian Food Pantry by $8,000 and authorize a subsequent agreement."
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of vote? If the name is called, those opposed will vote no. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill? Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Laval?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 1539. Reported the Committee on Urban Recreation for May 26, 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1394. Resolution overriding the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to deny the renaming of Knapp Agro Parklet to Oak Cliff Community Playground. Bill Number 1408. Resolution submitting the recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to formalize brick parts, trail names, Clayton Hill, Trail Concrete Block, and 276.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Just briefly, Madam President?
Yes.
On Bill 1394, Madam Clerk, just to be certain as to the action we're taking, we are to vote yes on 1394 because we're overriding the recommendation, correct?
Correct.
Great. Thanks, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents bill number fifteen forty, reported the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number fifteen oh eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreements through the National Association of State Procurement Official Corporative Purchasing Program for a three-year term with Cherry Road Technologies permitting the provision of cloud solutions to support the J V application and not to exceed one million fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of their passage of the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our last committee of the day is Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents bill number fifteen forty-one, reported the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number fourteen ninety-nine, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the proposed Fifth and Halke Innovation Research Tower, thirty-three ninety-six Fifth Avenue. Bill number fifteen hundred, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for twenty-four hundred Small Miss Street, Second Ward.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at one thirty, council will hold an executive session on bills fourteen seventy-five, fifteen oh one, and fifteen oh two. And Madam Clerk, do you know if those bills are related to, regards to?
Yes, there are warrants. One second. Yes, there are authorizing the issuance of warrants in favor of lawsuits. All three of them are in relation to lawsuits filed against the city, so there are warrants.
Okay, I just want to public. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, May twenty-six, council will meet for the standing committee's meeting at ten a.m. chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Also tomorrow afternoon at one thirty p.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on bill fourteen fourteen as it relates to the inclusionary housing overlay district. And Councilwoman Gross, are you cheering that one?
If you'd like me to, sure.
Yeah, I thought we talked about it, but it wasn't positive. Okay. That's great, thank you. And to register for Wednesday's council meeting and public hearing, fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by nine a.m. for the standing committee's meeting and by eleven thirty a.m. for the public hearing. You may also register by calling four one two, two five five, two one three eight. And just a few things, I just want to mention that I want to do. I want to form a couple task forces. One for the tax collection in the city of Pittsburgh and the issues that we're having. And I did call for a post-agenda. I want to bring a group of people together. Hopefully, Councilman Lavelle, you'll serve on that committee with members Strasburger, Kraus, and Wilson to talk about the tax collections and what we need to do. And I'd like to, during that post-agenda, which will be scheduled in about two weeks, I'd like to just bring back what you found and any suggestions you might have. And then I'd like to form a park task force, because we had talked about this before and how we're going to be spending this park tax. And I'd like to put on that committee task force, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Gross, O'Connor, Councilman O'Connor, Councilman Coghill, and Councilman Burgess, and then some other people. So I'll be sending out invitations from our office for those meetings today. And then the other thing I'd like to do is form a committee to go over the roles of council, including public comment. We've got some information from the law department on what we can and cannot do regarding that. And so with that committee, I'd like to have Councilman Burgess, Kraus, Gross, and Wilson report back to the other members and to talk to us about what we can do. And if members have a concern and don't want to serve, just let me know. But that's my intention as of today. And then, and then lastly, we are working, Madam Clerk and I are working with the administration on our return to the building and what we see for members, what we see for the public and what we see for staff and how that we can do all those things while protecting all the parties involved. And there's a few things we still have to do. We have to make sure that the clerk is protected. We have to make sure that when we have public comment that we're prepared for it to either be via Zoom or a hybrid, either Zoom or some in person. So we're going to work on some of that stuff with the Madam Clerk and with the administration. If any members want to work with us on that, please reach out to Madam Clerk. I'd love to have any help with that at all. That's it for me. Anything for members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to excuse any absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved.
Second, okay, meeting adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.